Greetings all. I'm Gail McCall, leader of the first Hilly Unit of the Seattle King County League of Women Voters. I'm pleased to introduce our council member and fifth-generation Seattle resident Andrew Lewis. Many of us met him when he was campaigning for his current position, and it is a pleasure to connect with him again. Before practicing law, he served on the Seattle Human Rights Commission and several other organizations, and managed a council member's campaign. As Assistant City Attorney in the Seattle City Attorney's Office, he focused on trial litigation, making charging decisions on criminal cases, and channeling low-level offenders to community-based diversions. The youngest member of the council, he has plunged wholeheartedly into long-buried, complex issues that have now boiled to the surface.
Thank you. It's good to be here with you both. So do you want me to make my opening remarks now?
Sure.
Thank you so much. So yeah, Gail and Adele, thank you for setting this up, and it's really a privilege to come back here and address Horizon House. I greatly enjoyed coming here two times during the election to talk to members about the pressing issues facing our city. And while 2020 has, in many respects, been different than how we thought it would be in terms of the COVID-19 virus, you know, the closure of the West Seattle Bridge, and massive, and ongoing demonstrations in response to the horrific murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, there have been other challenges we faced as well that were more predictable: the ongoing crisis of so many of our neighbors living in a state of homelessness on our streets, the ongoing need to address long-term public transportation issues to make sure people in the city can get where they need to go, workforce housing, and the affordability of people to be able to live and work here in the same community. So as we take on challenges that are new and continue to tackle with challenges that are old, it's really been an interesting time to be on the city council. As you can tell, I am broadcasting from my kitchen, since we are not meeting as a council in person due to honor the social distancing rules under the governor's order for COVID-19. So I want to go over just a couple of things that I've been working on this year, and then I want to leave the balance to talking to Adele and Gail about some of the questions that they prepared today. The first thing that I would say is, you know, I think first and foremost and fundamentally, our job as a city council is oversight. And one of the things I talked about many times on the campaign trail was having more oversight and a protected and expanded auditing function in the city to make sure that tax dollars are being spent effectively and efficiently. I moved really swiftly in the fall, despite the hurdles that COVID threw out, to convene an expert panel that I have been working with in a special committee to look at ways to enhance and expand our performance auditing. You can follow this ongoing work on my website. The goal was to, by the end of the summer, produce a report back to the council due to the recent ongoing demonstrations. I think that unfortunately is going to be something that's going to take longer. But I am committed, over my four-year term, to produce real, significant, and long-term changes to our performance auditing to beef it up and enhance it so the tax dollars are well-spent here in the city of Seattle. And I am really honored to have assembled a group that includes professional auditors, retired professional auditors from a variety of different backgrounds in Washington State and beyond, academics, local practitioners, and folks from the private sector, to really come up with some comprehensive recommendations on how we can enhance, protect, and expand our auditing capability. Another thing that I am really proud that I've been working on has been making sure that as we transition into an economy that is more socially distanced, and that is operating within the confines of the COVID-19 crisis, that we are making sure that that transition is done equitably and fairly to people that are on our front lines doing essential work. I was really proud to join with Councilmember Herbald in passing new premium pay legislation for essential gig economy workers on the front line who are not considered full employees and receive very little consideration for the important work that they are doing, exposing themselves potentially to coronavirus on a daily basis, to deliver food, and to do the essential work that we all depend on them for. In many cases, they're providing their own cleaning equipment and their own protective gear, and I'm really proud that I was able to arrange with Councilmember Herbald to get them some direct additional consideration for that work that they're doing and to compensate them for the additional costs that they're assuming. That premium pay legislation has gone a long way to making sure that those workers that are doing this important work are being respected and don't need to be out of pocket due to this crisis that was far beyond their control, and can, with pride and dignity, continue to do the essential work of delivering us our groceries, delivering us our takeout food, delivering us so many of the essential staples, and making sure that we can, as individuals, remain inside and practice social distancing, and that they are doing those essential things so that we don't have to and that we can follow those guidelines. And I was proud to stand with them and get that consideration. I was also proud to join with my colleagues just recently in passing a bill to make sure that small businesses who are going under because of COVID are in a position where their landlord cannot invoke what's called a personal guarantee in their lease. This important bill will make sure that if you're a small business owner, and if you go under, while, you know, everyone signs up to potentially lose everything from their business, you shouldn't be signing up to also lose your house and lose your life savings. And I will make sure, through this ordinance that is passed, that those clauses are suspended for the duration of COVID, and that those small business owners can go forward, knowing that they can get onto a payment plan, that they can honor their obligations with their landlord without the risk of incurring that particular type of remedy. So those are a couple of the things I've been working on. I also want to give a brief update, as the Chair of the Select Committee on Homelessness Strategies and Investments, that we have made significant new investments this summer in getting more of our unsheltered neighbors off the streets. I was really proud to join with Councilmember Morales and pass an amendment to our spending plan this summer that put another 300 tiny house villages, or will put another 300 tiny house village spaces out into the community to make sure that folks that are currently living in unsanctioned encampments, folks that are currently living on the street, that we can get them inside, that we can get them off the public right-of-ways, and in a place where they can live with dignity, that is separate from the street and that is separate from these unsanctioned encampments, and will help in our city strategies to make sure that our public right-of-ways are clear of these omnipresent unsanctioned encampments that are there, because the people in them have nowhere else that they can go. So, you know, that is still an ongoing project. There's a lot more that we need to do, but removing 300 more homeless folks out of our public streets and right-of-ways and into a safe place where they can live with dignity in a tiny house village, that is something that this council did this summer, and I look forward to those homes being stood up throughout the late summer and the early fall so we can get people out of those encampments and clear some of those encampments. So with that, I'm willing to open it up to questions. Thanks for letting me do a broad overview. I continue to make myself available on a weekly basis for one-on-one office hours via Zoom or via phone call. People can sign up for that on my website at www.seattle.gov/council/lewis. And it's right there. You can sign up for an office hour. I'm happy to take a phone call, an email, or a one-on-one appointment anytime, and really appreciate the ability to represent a great community like Horizon House and look forward to your questions. You're muted, Gail. You're on mute. Sorry.
Okay, we have on our list of questions, and these are actually, I think, a little farther back than we thought they would be, but the first one was, is there a link between Jumpstart's approach to defunding and yours?
Right. I appreciate that question. So Jumpstart is not actually advocating defunding. So Jumpstart is a new payroll tax on very high-grossing businesses. So I was one of the co-sponsors of this legislation. So Jumpstart Seattle is a proposal that was proposed by Councilmember Muscata. It assesses a tax on businesses. That's the first thing that's important to understand, is businesses pay this tax, not individuals. And it's only very high-earning businesses. So it's got to be a business that earns more than $7 million in a year, and that also has employees that are highly compensated. So if you're a business that makes $7 million a year, and you have employees that are paid over $150,000 a year or over $400,000 a year, you pay a small percentage per employee that's at $150,000 a year in a payroll tax. So it is a little bit of a complicated tax, but it's important to note, it only affects 3% of the businesses in Seattle. It does not affect healthcare, non-profit healthcare providers are exempted from the tax. It will sunset in 20 years, and the money from it will go to standing up long-term investments to get people that are homeless inside and off the street, which is the essential reason why I supported it. You know, would I have liked to see the rates a little lower, potentially? You know, are there some of the things in that tax that I don't like in who it covers? Sure, you know, I joined some of my colleagues in seeking to exempt all nonprofits. I was only able to exempt medical nonprofits, and I would have liked to see broader and deeper exemptions, but those were some fights that I lost, and we were left with the tax that we had. This tax will get to the crux of finally delivering on a lot of the long-overdue projects that we need to be doing in the city to finally get people experiencing homelessness off the streets, out of these encampments, and inside. And that is why I ultimately supported the tax and voted for it. We were able to get some good changes in that made it a better tax, and it's going to have a massive impact on the safety of our community, the dignity of people living with homelessness, and actually, the development also of workforce housing and other interventions. So I was proud of doing that work, and I look forward to working with the executive on implementing some of the changes and reforms we are proposing.
Another question to do with budget is, why do you support defunding the Seattle Police by 50%? How will streets in downtown Seattle be kept safe?
Yeah, and I really appreciate that question, and it's a really good conversation that we're having right now. An important thing to remember is that this isn't just a deductive conversation, it's additive. And the thing that was instrumental to me, because, you know, I used to be a prosecutor, you know, I'm friends with a lot of police officers, and I have a lot of experience in public safety work. And actually, up until as recently as February, I was supportive of expanding the police force, I mean, expanding police staffing levels. The thing that changed for me was when we got a briefing from SPD last month, and you know, I was surprised, and I think a lot of my colleagues and even some of the people at SPD were surprised too, because Seattle Police are currently responding to 911 calls that are non-criminal as a majority of the calls. 56% of all 911 calls that the police respond to are non-criminal calls. And I don't mean those calls are non-violent. I mean those calls are non-criminal. Like, those are either public health-related calls, or they're citation-related calls. So, you know, like jaywalking, speeding, littering, but things that are not criminal and criminally prosecutable. When I saw that statistic, what it implied to me is that we need more first response. We don't necessarily need more police, and we need the police to be in a position where they are exclusively responding to criminal calls, and they are doing what their job should be. Like, police are investigators that we want charged and spending their time with, responding to dangerous situations, you know, being an exigent armed presence to deal with things that require an officer to respond. We don't want them showing up to try to triage people that are in behavioral mental health. We don't want them showing up to be doing things that are non-criminal investigations that have a public health or a citation-related nexus. So the other thing that we need to take note of is the Police Department currently does a whole bunch of things that I didn't even know that they did and that they shouldn't be doing. And for example, 911 dispatch. 911 dispatch, which sends responders that aren't even the police, right? It dispatches EMTs, it dispatches other kinds of response. The 911 dispatch is housed inside the Police Department, and all of the dispatchers are civilian employees, but none of the supervisors are the civilians. It's sworn officers. And, you know, that's like putting a baker in charge of a bunch of plumbers. It just doesn't make sense. You know, dispatchers aren't police, police aren't dispatchers. So separating out the dispatch from SPD is something that the community activists, the people that have been advocating for their broader defunding strategy, simply moving that 911 dispatch is one of the things that they want to see, and that preserves the dispatch service, but they count it as a defund. That alone, just moving 911 dispatch, that alone is a 10% cut to SPD's budget, just moving that to make it its own department. So it's important to keep that in mind, that what we were talking about is additive. We're talking about more public safety. We're talking about rightsizing public safety. We're talking about expanding the Health One program, which is a collaboration between firefighters and EMTs to deliver medical services on low-acuity calls. You know, we're talking about developing a first-response system modeled on Kahoots from Eugene, Oregon, the Crisis Assistance Helping Out in the Streets program. The abbreviation is Kahoots, which is kind of a silly abbreviation, but it's another public health-informed call system that responds to 20% of all 911 calls, and they do it without the assistance of the police in Eugene. Out of the 24,000 calls that Kahoots responded to last year, they only opted to involve the police 150 times. They've operated this program without incident for the last several years. So this is important to remember, that when, at least when I am talking about the defunding police discussion, I'm not talking about abolishing and getting rid of the police. We're going to need police. They have an important job. They have an important role, but that job needs to be responding to criminal calls, and that job doesn't need to be responding to all these other things that they're currently spending most of their time on. So that's the kind of reform that I am focused on and that I am interested in, and I'm happy to work with anyone at the Horizon House community on how to realize it.
Okay. There's one more question that's sort of on that line. The recent rise of gun violence by residents and/or outsiders raises concern. What steps will be taken to deal with unlicensed gun users or licensed owners who use their guns to rob, steal, and shoot innocent people?
Yeah. Well, I think there's a couple of things we need to do, and, you know, I, for one, am a massive opponent of the proliferation of guns. I mean, the root of so many of our public safety problems is the fact that it is so easy in this community to get a gun. You know, currently, right now, in the COVID environment, it was easier to get a gun than it is to get a job in the city of Seattle right now, just based on the state of the economy, based on the accessibility and proliferation of firearms. So there's a couple of things that I think we can do. I think first, we got to be investing a lot in some of our community partners that have been doing really, really great work, what they call "violence disrupting." And these are folks that, you know, that work with the King County Prosecutor, they work with the police, but they're community-based. And they go out and they contact a lot of these young men, and it tends to mostly be young men, that are getting wrapped up in gun violence, and they really bring them in to their community, they hook them up with mentors, and they really work with them to really start making different choices in their life, to really, like, stick with the community, to get rid of their gun, to pursue other opportunities, and to really engage with these organizations, to get new opportunities, to get jobs, and to really have a support network to support them making those decisions. You know, the main organization that does this work is Community Passageways. They do excellent work. They currently got about 50 young men on their caseload. Almost all of these young men were introduced to the caseload at Community Passageways because they had some kind of gun-involved situation that led to them taking a referral, where it was like, look, you got a choice. You could go and engage with Community Passageways, or we can prosecute you the old-fashioned way in the King County Jail. And you know what? Most of those young men, because they're at the beginning of their life, you know, they went and they chose to engage with Community Passageways. Great organization, and if anyone has, you know, any spare money where they're looking to determine, you know, who they're going to donate it to, I would definitely recommend looking up Community Passageways. It's run by a great guy named Dominic Davis. We are currently working with them to scale up their caseload, because they currently got about 50 young men on their caseload. And, you know, it's tough to say "caseload," like, a better word is really to say "community." Like, they've got 50 young men in their community, and they have plans to scale it, they've got plans to build it. And, you know, that is the kind of transformative work we need to do, is it's, you know, you need to really get to some of these folks in the community and, like, really let them know that there are alternatives, there are different options. You don't need to be involved in crime. You don't need to be involved in violence. It's really about investing in the people in the community that are doing this work, and that's really the only way you're going to get there, is if you can stop these young men from getting recruited into this pathway of crime, and really make sure they have the resources they need to be successful, and to have a community that'll back them up. And that community is there, that community is crying out for investment, that community is crying out for partnership, and we're going to meet them and we're going to do it. I think the second thing that we need to do is, you know, there's been a lot of violence that's been going on in a lot of these unsanctioned encampments. And these unsanctioned encampments in the city are filled with folks that are experiencing desperate chronic homelessness, and in many cases are addicted to meth or addicted to fentanyl, and drug dealers are going to these encampments, and they're enforcing the rules of the black market on drug dealing through violence. And what we really need to be doing is getting out to these unsanctioned encampments and offering these folks placements in tiny house villages, which are a proven, successful method of getting folks out of chronic homelessness. We've got to be redoubling our efforts to do that, and those are really, these are the focal points where gun violence is occurring. Like, in my district, there have been two shootings in the last couple of weeks near the Second Avenue Extension Encampment in Pioneer Square. It is clear it's because there are folks going down there, and they are enforcing the rules of the drug black market, and the surest way, the surest way to stop that shooting is to get the folks out of that encampment, get them into tiny house villages, give them a place to stay, and that will, it'll get rid of and disrupt that market that is the focal point of that violence. So those are some of the strategies that we need to use. It's absolutely critical, and I am dedicated to that work.
Just one more little question on that, and that is, where are these guns coming from? Are there, is there an illicit pathway where these guns are making their way from one person to the next without no license or anything like that?
That's a really good question. You know, so I used to be a prosecutor, and I'm very keenly aware that the way that most of these firearms get into the market, most of these firearms actually have their origin with a licensed, bonded, actual legitimate gun dealer, right? That sells a gun, you know, and I'm going to say, in most cases, in a legal transaction. This is a country where it is still uncomfortably easy to get a gun. Washington State is one of the better jurisdictions, but even in Washington State, you know, you have folks that can get guns and that then turn them around and sell them on the black market, and folks then file off the serial numbers, and they use those guns for crime. And there is a lucrative market in turning over these guns that are bought legally. You know, the other thing that I would say too is, you know, we are still in a situation where the gun market really just, you know, can go over state borders just as easily too, right? So even though we have good, strong gun laws in Washington, people can buy up a lot of guns in Idaho, which has much looser gun laws, they can bring them over here and they can sell them in the Seattle market. We're also in a position where, you know, law-abiding, peaceful gun owners, right? And, you know, we're a country where you're allowed to own guns, you know, will get burgled and will get burglarized, like, one of the most premium things that makes you a target. And this is my favorite thing to say to people that buy guns because they're worried about being burglarized. The surest way that you can be a target for burglary is if you have a gun in your house, because guns are one of the most sought-after things to steal in a residential burglary, and then fence on a black market that is thirsty and hungry for more guns. So, you know, I mean, that is why, and that's where it comes from, like, the surest way, you know, until we can get federal action that cracks down hard and makes it harder to get a gun for people that clearly should not have them, the only thing that we can really do as a city in the short term is, you know, continue to increase the incentive for safe storage and secure storage of guns, first thing. Second thing, focus on the other end of the people that currently think it's a good idea to get guns, and really make sure that they know that they have a community that is going to embrace them, that respects them, and that they can thrive in and succeed in without having a gun, and that they don't need one. And that is one, a place that, where we have a lot more power as a city. Otherwise, the federal government needs to step up and make it harder to get a gun and crack down on these gun dealers that are selling guns in a way that is irresponsible.
Okay, I have two follow-up questions that are of a different nature. One, what has the city council passed that you are most proud of?
Yeah. So of the votes that I have been involved in, I think the thing that I am most proud of so far, and I alluded to it, you know, earlier in my comments, is I really do think that, you know, in my short time on the council, it's only been seven months, is the premium pay ordinance for the gig economy workers. And this is really a new, it's a very new segment of the economy, right? Like, we haven't had these app-based drivers in our economy for a long time. It's a whole new sector that has grown up in the last decade. They are completely open to all sorts of exploitation, and they are completely overworked. They have very little consideration for a lot of the expenses they assume as independent contractors, and all of that has been compounded by COVID, where they are out there every day grinding to make sure that we're getting our groceries, to make sure that we're getting to where we, you know, like, getting our, you know, takeout for food. You know, they are out there doing this work, and just to be able to make sure that they are getting some extra consideration, and that we are going to transition to an economy that is more equitable and treats these workers with more equity, I think is really important, and I'm glad we were able to do that and get that going, because it's a huge segment of our economy. It's predominantly people that are my age or younger who are doing this work and who really are not making enough money to realize the same opportunities of their parents and their grandparents. So I'm very proud of that work, and I hope to build on it.
Well, our last one, which is a very nice one, is, what are your wildest dreams? What you'll push for?
Thank you. My wildest dreams as the Chair of the Select Committee on Homelessness is that we will end chronic homelessness in the city of Seattle. And, you know, I'm a realist. I don't think that we're going to ever get to a point where there are literally zero homeless people, but we can certainly get to a place where there are not thousands of homeless people on our streets that we see every day who have debilitating public health challenges, you know, who have behavioral, mental health conditions, who are suffering from substance addiction, and that we walk by them every day, deferring our action another day on what we are going to do to alleviate their suffering. And I am hoping that at the end of my four years, that there is a material difference that we can see with our eyes on the streets of the city of Seattle, and that more importantly, that that translates to a real material difference in the well-being, the dignity, and the safety of our homeless residents, and then also of all of us too, who deal with the certain tangential public health and public safety challenges related to the unsanctioned encampments as they're currently allowed to persist. So much of the root causes of a lot of the things we discussed in the city, be it the gun violence we were discussing, be it the, you know, public health crisis, be it public safety, low-level petty offenses and petty crime, so many of things go back to our absolute abject failure to scale up the interventions that can get our homeless neighbors inside where they can live with dignity. And too, more often than not, we slide into a posture of wanting to be punitive, of wanting to try to incarcerate our way out of the crisis of homelessness. of wanting to try to incarcerate our way out of the crisis of homelessness, which we know from a decades-long attempt will not work. Sometimes we think of a policy of toleration, of, you know, eliminating, you know, eliminating outreach, you know, allowing the unsanctioned encampments, that that's the way to go. And neither of those options work, and we have seen evidence that they don't work. What we need to do is scale up permanent supportive housing. And I'm proud to work with the Third Door Coalition, which is an alliance of service providers and small business owners who have come together to advocate for a bold regional plan to scale up permanent supportive housing, get people inside, get them off the streets, and transition to a new period where we will finally have that clarity. It'll be so clarifying for for our, for the people that are working in our emergency rooms, for our firefighters, for our police, for our service providers, that the massive caseload of muddling and triaging our way through chronic homelessness has to end, and we have to do better. And I think that we are on, we are on a path to do better as a council. You know, the beginning has been that there's 300 tiny house spaces. I want to build on that. I want to expand on that. We need to find dignified places for people who are living homeless to go and live inside. And we need to do that with urgency.
Well, that gives us a lot to think about, that's for sure. So we very much appreciate all that you've had to say and look forward to our question and answer part that comes later on.
I really, really appreciate that. And I really look forward to that too, and and I really appreciate you guys convening this. You know, Horizon House as a community, it's very important to me. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and not only update everyone on what I've been doing, but also to get feedback on issues in the neighborhood and ways that we as an office and the team can be better partners and can be more accountable and responsive. So I look forward to that and greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.